Thank you very much, and again, we'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Meeting for the evening of December the 1st. All of our council are present at this meeting. We will begin the meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is our consent agenda. We'll invite Mr. Kevin Christopher Forward to read that agenda. And Kevin, I believe you may have heard, we've already received cards on 8A, 8C, and 11A. I'm sorry, 11A, I'm sorry.
Seven.
7A, 7, 7A, 8A, and 8C.
Correct.
Did I get that right, Holly?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2 approval minutes of previous meetings is written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Hava Java, 2849 North Power Road. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Wings of Flight Foundation, one-day event, December 17th, 4626 East Fighter Aces Drive. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Eggs to Sea, 5021 South Power Road. Item 4A, approving one-year term contract of excess workers' compensation insurance and workers' compensation self-insurance surety bond. Item 4B, approving one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for GEA Centrifuge separators, equipment, parts, and services for the Water Resources Department. Item 4C, approving contract to purchase, upgrade, convert 1MD helicopter and dollar limit increase to the term contract for helicopter engine parts, repair, and overhaul services for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4D, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for moving services for various departments as requested by the Business Services and Engineering Departments. Item 4E, approving additional vendor award to the one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for pull and valve boxes for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources and Transportation Department. Item 4F, approving contract for Northeast Public Safety Facility Project Construction Manager at Risk, guaranteed maximum price. This project's funded by 2018 Authorized Public Safety and Capital General Funds. Item 5A, approving resolution extinguishing two public utilities and facilities easements at 10,001 East Pecos Road for temporary drainage basins to accommodate for the construction of a commercial development. Item 5B, approving resolution extinguishing a 50-foot landscape easement and a 25-foot sidewalk easement located at 6147 East Main Street to accommodate a future townhome development. Item 5C, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Public Transportation Authority for fixed route, bus, paratransit, and ride choice services. Item 5D, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a funding agreement with Valley Metro Rail for the current light rail operations in the city of Mesa. Item 5E, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a conduit occupancy agreement with Google Fiber Arizona for use of a portion of the city's existing conduit duct bank system. Item 5F, approving resolution adopting the Falcon Field Rotorcraft land use compatibility study to serve as a guiding document for future development around Falcon Field Airport. Item 5G, approving resolution for zoning case 22-773 for property located north of Elliott Road and east of Signal Butte Road. Site plan review to allow for an expansion of the Signal Butte water treatment plant. Item 5H, approving resolution canvassing, declaring, and adopting the results of the special bond election consolidated with the statewide general election held on November 8th, 2022. Items 6A through 6D pertain to action on resolutions and introducing ordinances regarding Mesa City Code Title 11 zoning ordinances, zoning ordinance, and setting December 8th, 2022 as a public hearing day on these ordinances. Item 6A is for approving resolution regarding a temporary use permit. Item 6B is for introduction of an ordinance amending various chapters of Title 11 pertaining to temporary uses, outdoor displays, site plans, and special events. Item 6C is for approving resolution regarding outdoor eating areas. Item 6D is for introduction of an ordinance for amending various chapters of Title 11 pertaining to outdoor eating areas. Item 7A has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 8A has been removed from consent agenda. Item 8B, approving ordinance for zoning case 22-265 for property generally located east of Greenfield Road and south of Southern Avenue. Rezone with a planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for a multiple residence development. Item 8C has been removed from consent agenda. Item 8D is for continuance to the January 9th, 2023 city council meeting. This is an ordinance for zoning case 22-263 for property generally located east of Higley Road and/or the Baseline Road. Again, it's for continuance to the January 9th, 2023 city council meeting. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Has Mosley ever received any other requests to have an item taken off the consent agenda?
No other requests.
All right, thank you. We have a motion made by Ms. Spilsbury, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please vote. Thank you. Consent agenda passes unanimously. First item off the consent agenda, I believe, is item 7A. This is introduction of an ordinance and setting December 8th as the date of the public hearing on the ordinance, having to do with a zoning case, the Millennium Springs, Superstition Springs zoning case. We have a request to speak from Joel Sands. Mr. Sands, are you with us? Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, members of the city council. My name is Joel Sands. I'm from the law firm Udall Schumway, 1138 North Almazore Road in Mesa, and I represent AT Steel University. AT Steel University has a mixed opposition to this rezoning request. AT Steel University generally supports housing in the area that is consistent with an educational medical campus and that supports uses consistent with the specialty districts. As the council is aware, this area is in an educational specialty district. It's kind of a wobbler between an educational specialty district and educational medical specialty district. And the Mesa 24 General Plan character area designation on the property is specialty, and per Chapter 7 of the general plan, the primary focus of this specialty character area designation is provided for large areas with a single use, such as an educational campus or medical facility. The intent behind the specialty campus designations are for large areas with a single use. The ATSU previously supported housing generally. I know that the applicant has said that it supports housing, that ATSU has supported this case. It's supported housing generally in this area, but it wants to make a point that it can't support this case if its support is considered precedent for supporting a use that is inconsistent with the specialty district established in the area by the Mesa 2040 General Plan. ATSU does consider housing to be consistent with support of an educational campus, but it may not be consistent with the single use requirement in the general plan. Development could be, could be beneficial to AT Steel University, but it still may not be consistent with the single use requirement in the general plan. So although AT Steel considers housing to be consistent with the support of an educational campus, to the extent that its prior support of the housing in this area is interpreted as support for a use that is acceptable in the specialty district, even though it does not support the single use, AT Steel cannot support this case. So if approval or consideration is based on the idea that any articulation of a use that might somehow be beneficial to an educational campus but isn't consistent with that single use, AT Steel would oppose this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Again, the item that's before us is not ruling on the merits of this zoning case. This is setting the matter for a public hearing at our next meeting a week from today.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Of course, Mr. Sands, I think Ms. Spilsbury has a question for you.
So there is a letter of support from AT Steel in this paperwork for this case. So are we disregarding that letter of support?
Well, you know, that letter, there is another zoning case in front of the city council. I think it's going to be heard on January 9th, and it's, that support of housing in the area has been interpreted as inconsistent with its opposition to the other case. And the fine point we're trying to make is that the educational medical campuses are supposed to be a single use, and the general plan shouldn't be interpreted as if the use that is proposed can somehow, in some way, support that single use, that it should be approved. If it's not consistent with that single use, then it is not consistent with the general plan and shouldn't be approved.
You're talking like a lawyer. I'm trying to wrap my brain around what to say.
It is a fine point, yes.
Okay, okay.
Part of the issue, Councilperson Spilsbury, is that, as we said in our opposition to the other case, the fact that AT Steel gave general support for housing in this area has been interpreted for, as the idea that as long as a use can be articulated that supports education or that supports a medical facility, that AT Steel would be in support of it. It is in support of housing because it thinks it's consistent with a campus-like setting, but it's not support of any zoning approval that might have an articulated basis that could possibly support a medical or an educational campus.
Okay, so because the other property near AT Steel, we're still in talking and it works with that, and so they don't want to show support for this, which would then imply that they would support the other.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for this, for this, for Joel? Vice Mayor.
I'm a little confused, so maybe I need to understand better, but I understood that as long as 80% of the area is used for, you know, the primary zoning district, then a secondary use would be allowed? Or is that just in this text amendment? No, wait, educate.
That's the next, the next matter that we'll be discussing.
Educational? So it's different for education?
And Vice Mayor Duff, the, AT Steel's position is that the general plan.
Oh, 55% for educational.
Overrides the primary or secondary uses in the zoning code. The general plan says that this area needs to be developed as an educational or medical campus. And so any use, whether it's a primary or a secondary use, has to be consistent with that single use, which is an educational or medical campus. So some other use that might somehow tangentially support a medical or an educational campus isn't in compliance with the general plan's requirement that these areas should be designated as a single use, either an educational campus or medical campus. So I think what you're addressing, Vice Mayor, is the zoning code has primary and secondary uses. Those primary and secondary uses might be something like light industrial, planned employment park. Those primary and secondary uses still have to, in our opinion, comply with the overriding requirement that the general plan is for a single use, which is for a medical campus or an educational campus. So if the primary or secondary uses under the zoning code are not consistent with an educational campus or a medical campus, if it doesn't support that single use, the general plan overrides the zoning code's definition of what a primary use or a secondary use can be. For example, if light industrial does not conform to the single use of an educational campus or medical campus, the fact that it is a primary use in the zoning code does not override the general plan.
So you're saying that you don't feel that housing is a supportive use?
We think housing, we think housing, even in the general plan, the general plan says that for an educational campus, in the general plan itself, not in the zoning code, in the general plan itself, it says that housing is a legitimate, is an allowed secondary use for a educational campus, but that's in the general plan. That is not in the zoning code. So the general plan says make this area a single use, educational campus or medical campus. Medical campus doesn't refer in the general plan to housing, but educational campus does say that housing is a permissible secondary use. But it doesn't say that other uses that might be consistent with the zoning code, like light industrial or planned employment park, are consistent with the general plan's single campus requirement. If, if a, something is approvable under the light industrial zoning or planned employment park zoning, but it is not consistent with the single use as a medical campus or an educational campus, the general plan overrides that. So even though it might be consistent with the zoning code, if it's not consistent with the single use as a medical campus or a educational campus, then the general plan should take precedence over the more specific zoning code.
This is getting further down the rabbit hole.
Yes.
Since we're just voting on the hearing.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, the time's up, so I don't know if you want to allow this person to speak. There is one thing that was said that I think is, that was said that the primary and secondary uses are in the zoning code, they are in the general plan. There is one sentence in the general plan that talks about the primary use, but you have to read the general plan as an entire document. This is really sort of trying to set up an argument that he wants to be able to make in January. I think we spent more time on it than's necessary, but the concept of primary and secondary uses are in the general plan, not in the zoning code. So I think that was, he misspoke a moment ago, but we're gonna have a, we'll, I suspect we're gonna have this conversation again in January.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sands. Council, again, this, the item before us is whether or not to hold a hearing on this zoning case next Thursday. Is there a motion to move this forward? Yes, a motion made by Ms. Spilsbury, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please vote. Thank you. Item 7A passes unanimously, so for everyone interested, this case will be heard a week from today, December 8th. So if you're interested in this zoning case, please come at that time. Next item on our agenda is item 8A. This is amending Title 6 of the Mesa City Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 12 entitled Offensive, Offensive, Excessive, and Prohibited Noises. We have two requests to speak. First is Jan Barney, followed by Travis Barney.
Hello.
You have, I'm sorry, you have three minutes.
Yes, so we had a meeting recently. This is against the noise ordinance because we are trying to figure out what the parameters are with the business that we hold a community wall with that we feel is over the excessive enough, excessive enough of the current noise, city noise ordinance, basically. So I know you were going to change some things in that, and we've been in correspondence with councilmember sisters, sorry, not sister, Mrs. Spilsbury. We had a meeting with her on October 17th regarding this, and at that time, we had had over 65 complaints from just our neighborhood for just the year of 2022, which they've been more excessive since then because of the reception area of Gather Estates. We currently, we were told that in the meeting on October 17th that we would be able to, there would be a general exemption to the noise ordinance. One of the changes to the noise ordinance staff is proposing to remove that exemption. Let's see here. So basically, 6-12-6, there's a general exemption to the noise ordinance for activity, including commercial activity, which permit, which is permitted under the zoning ordinance. One of the changes to the noise ordinance staff is proposing is to remove that exemption. Yet, in reviewing your proposal, it says in general exemptions, in Section D, activities provided by the city for a special event license, special use permit, or similar permit or permission subject to any limitation or conditions in license permit or permission. Those are the exemptions to your new noise ordinance, which she has a special events permit. So in my understanding, that doesn't, that exempts her from this. We have readings off of our back porch, which we live in almost, we have an acre and three-fourths, so we did not buy, purchase a home next to our neighbor. And she's been easily 7.5 on the decibel meter from our back porch where most of the time in our home. We can't even hardly hear our TV. We have to bump it up. We've, for six years, been trying to be reasonable with her and working with her on the noise. She now has blocked us. She's, for her special use permit, she's been violating that several times.
Ms. Barney, your time's up, so if you could just wrap it up, summarize, if you have anything else left to say.
So we just feel like there needs to be a better revision to the noise ordinance for that exclusion so that we can, we can have some perimeters on the noise ordinance for one that currently is.
Great, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Travis Barney. We live at 1127 South Lynnry Square in Mesa. We bought our property a little over 19 years ago, and six years ago, we literally had it ripped out from under us. You guys passed a special use permit for a reception center right behind us on Southern, which is 2600 East Southern Avenue in Mesa, and we were promised at that meeting, I was here, several of my neighbors were here, we were promised by the owner's attorney that they'd keep the volume down. They promised the city council they'd keep the volume down, and it passed, and yet they haven't. And the current noise ordinance doesn't give any decibel limits, and so even from your compliance officer, who I've talked with many times, just shrugs his shoulders. And when I text him sometimes when the decibel meter's really high, he tells me just to have a good evening, which is impossible. It's even rattled the picture frames on our family room wall, which our family room's on the back of the house, which faces this reception hall. The noise ordinance in Mesa, it's giving these special use permits out without any kind of compliance for them to follow. The police won't give them any tickets. We've called multiple times, and so we're here to beg of you, please do something, please make it so that we can have our lives back. Our kids don't even come over on weekends anymore, Friday or Saturday nights. They used to call to see if there was an event going on. Now they don't even call, because if there's an event going on, we can't even use our backyard. We haven't used our backyard in over six years since they opened up in the, in the winter. We can't open our windows until they turn the music off at 10 o'clock. We can't go to bed until they turn the music off, because our bedroom's on the back of the house. We'll have two fans on and earplugs in, and we can still get, the bass still comes into our bedroom. It's horrible. And so I hope that changes you guys make in the noise ordinance will include special use permits and that you will include decibel meter limits, which you used to have until 2006. You had a decibel limit on the noise, even at special use permits, which was taken off, I think, around 2009, I believe, and I don't know why that was, because it just leaves special use permits unlimited volume. And they do, they abuse it. There's, there's an event going on tonight. We'd love to invite all you guys over to sit in our family room and see what we have to put up with. And we, we want our property back. We want to use our fire pit in our backyard. We want to have a movie night with our grandkids, and we can't do it, and the only time to do that is in the winter. And we can't do that because they're always having events three to four nights a week. So just imagine having a hard day at work, you want to come home and relax, you sit down in your chair, and this music kicks on. I can't even start to tell you the PTSD we get when those lights come on over that wall. It's horrible. And I hope you'd look at the Wright House, which is in north Mesa. They can't use any modified noise unless they do it indoors, whether they put up a tent or they do it inside their building. And this is just out, and it's, it's horrible. And even neighbors two streets north are willing to sign a petition with us to get her shut down.
Thank you, Mr. Barney.
Thank you.
You bet. I know we've had presentations on this in prior study sessions, but council, questions for staff on this? Or Mr. Smith?
Mayor, I can respond and answer a few of your questions.
Yeah, please.
And while we did discuss some of those, it doesn't sound like maybe they'd heard some of that discussion, so I'd like them to have the benefit of that. And just going back a little bit, we're updating the noise ordinance to be more consistent with some of the municipalities around us, and some municipalities do have a decibel limit within their municipalities. I don't know the exact count, but from our view, most don't, and many that do don't enforce it. Mesa used to have a decibel number in it, but also, looking back at that council report, it wasn't beneficial, because many times it's hard to apply a specific number to an entire city. But as we talked in our study session, we could look at that in the future, and we'd probably need to hire a noise, a consultant, a sound consultant, to look at that as a possibility. But we're trying to bring this change to become more consistent with some of our adjoining municipalities. Let me talk, the first speaker had a concern about a very particular exemption, and let me address that, because I think she's misreading it, and, and I think if, I think I can answer her question in a way which will please her. So we changed that language specifically. So if you read that whole, that whole section, it says activities approved by the city for a temporary use or limited duration. That's the new language. The idea being if, say, you have a concert for one particular evening in a, in a park, that might be a special use permit, as opposed to the type of special use permit that is for a long, long-term use. But it even goes on to say that receives a special event license, permit or similar permit, but only to the extent such license permit or permission specifically exempts the activity from this chapter, and then goes on, subject to any limitations. This, this special use permit that they're talking about does not have that type of language within it, so it will not fall within this exemption. So we've, we've crafted this language very carefully, knowing their particular situation, so they won't fall without an exemption. But what we also did to sort of balance this with the businesses is we took something that we actually found from Chandler, and we added the concept back into the factors. When you look at the factors in 6123A, this is similar to other municipalities. One of the factors that you look at is the zoning and permitted land uses of the property or area from which the sound or noises emanates. And so it's a factor to consider, but it's not, it's not a carte blanche exception. And so it can be considered, like I said, but it's not an exemption. So hopefully that answers their questions.
Thank you. So again, I think that's good news for you, Ms. Marty, the, your neighbor is not exempt. Ms. Spilsbury.
Just to clarify on that, that this, this particular wedding venue has a special use permit, not a council use permit?
Correct.
That they got six years ago when very few of us were on council. And then, but that is not exempt.
It will not fall within. It will not fall within this exemption under 6126.
Okay, I would like to ask someone from police to come up. Jeff, I don't know if you want to, or, I don't know, whoever you think to explain what would be required for them to actually get a citation, because they've had police out there so many times without issuing a citation, and so what would be the factors that would make them get cited?
It's all right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. You know, really, it comes down to what the officers see when they are on scene. Every situation is different, every fact scenario is different. If they see factors such as, when you look at the list that is in the proposed ordinance, you know, the volume and intensity of the sound or noise, the proximity of the noise to any residential structures or regional property, the zoning, such as what's in the special use permit, which, by the way, I believe in that particular special use permit, it says that they have to adhere to the noise ordinance, so it was never that they could play music as loud as they wanted to. They always had to adhere to this, to the noise ordinance. Whether the sound is recurrent, intermittent, or constant, the time of day, so whether it's 1:00 AM or 11:00 PM or 5:00 PM makes a difference, the volume and intensity of the sound, whether the sound or noise is enhanced by, say, loudspeakers or amplifiers, and whether the sound is subject to being controlled with unreasonable effort or expense to the creator of the, of the person who's making the sound. So what the officers do when they get these calls is they go out there and they, they have to obviously talk to the reporting party, but they have to observe the noise and document it, and ultimately come up with a determination whether it's unreasonable. And I know we've talked about that in the past, about what is the reasonable person's standard. That's a concept that is, is used throughout officers' training experience, and I'll use an example. For example, disorderly conduct. That's a different type of offense that officers routinely are called to, and say there's an argument between two people. I'll just use Jim Smith and I, as we typically don't argue, but to say we do. And, you know, I'm really getting close to him in his face, and I'm getting agitated. And, you know, I'm really getting close to him in his face and I'm getting agitated. Okay? Now, that might be the start of disorderly conduct. But then let's say I elevate my voice and I start pointing my finger and that goes on for longer and longer. And Jim says, hey, can you please stop? And I don't stop and I get closer and closer yelling and screaming in his face. And I couldn't tell you exactly, or I don't know if an officer would be able to tell you exactly when disorderly conduct is committed, when I'm shaking my finger in his face, how many, you know, unpleasant things. I don't have an exact number. That's almost impossible to really say. But the officers are trained to use their best judgment and use their discretion to, based on handling these calls day in and day out, and ultimately make a decision determination what the point of being unreasonable really is compared of what, you know, they, they think would hold up in court. And, and even if they do a citation or a long form to the prosecutor's office or, or it goes to a civil hearing officer, you know, ultimately there's a finder of fact, the judge. The judge gets to weigh these factors and determine, and those that are accused of violating the ordinance would ultimately have their day in court as well and, and to present their argument as to why they were not. So it's not that the officers are the end-all, be-all of making these decisions. They have to go off of what facts they have at the scene based on the best information as well as the reporting party and, and the potential violator to hear their side of the story and, and do what they can. So that's, to answer your question, it's hard to say, I can't point exactly, just like that disorderly conduct scenario I gave, I can't tell you exactly when disorderly conduct becomes committed, but they, they just have to consider the facts and make judgments like they do every day.
I guess I would just make the comment. I, I do think that these changes are needed in our current ordinance and that they do clean up the language and they make things a lot clearer. It's still super subjective to me. And so I do, I mean, there's just so much that could go, that could factor into whether the officer makes, actually makes a citation. So I have no idea how my colleagues feel, but I would, I, I want to go ahead with passing these changes to the noise ordinance, but I also would like to ask that we maybe do look into getting a noise consultant and looking at what some options would be for an objective noise ordinance and look at what other cities do.
All right, thank you, Ms. Spillsbury.
So that there were maybe possible decibel levels or, or distance levels or something. Because otherwise they, the cops are going to just keep going out and they're going to keep not citing them and they don't have any way to move this forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Barney brought up a good point on the decibel meter. And just, I, I have no clue what constitutes a really loud noise and what they're experiencing at their home. But I think some type of standard in the future could be modified in our noise ordinance and looking there because all of us have different decibels of noise that we can tolerate or cannot. So with that said, I just maybe moving forward with that because I think it's a good idea. Thanks.
Mr. Luna.
You know, I feel bad for these people. They've been living there for 20 years and then all of a sudden this business comes in and disrupts their life. It's just not fair. So I, I agree. I think we need to have some language that talks about decibel levels and how we measure that because to disrupt their lives is, is inappropriate. You know, I respect businesses, but I also respect peace and quiet. And you've lived in your house for 20 years. This is, this is horrible. So if we can include that language, I would support it.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on this? I, I'm in favor of moving forward with, with this as well, that the, the changes we've made to the ordinance do make it a lot more enforceable. And so a lot, I think that prior to this, it was difficult to issue any type of citation. And I do think, you know, this situation is a very subjective situation. You know, what is a reasonable amount of noise for one person is different for another. So, so there is absolutely judgment calls that are, that, that's what the tact we're taking. And maybe we'll decide that that's, and then, you know, not good enough. But I think this is a good improvement on our existing noise ordinance. And I agree that we need to be open to maybe strengthening it in the future. But I support the proposed changes right now. All right, council, we have, I'm sorry, I can't see on the screen if anyone's filed that we, this is item 8A. Is there a motion to approve in a second?
There was a motion made by Freeman, seconded by Spillsbury.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is item 8C. I believe we have someone on the phone, but before we go to that, I, I wanted to, I neglected to make a comment I wanted to make on our consent agenda item, which is there were a couple of items on the consent agenda that were significant and I didn't want to let them pass without just making note of that. One of them is that we canvassed the election that was just completed in November. And I just wanted to point out that the voters of Mesa supported us on four important questions, including public safety bonds, home rule and amendments to our charter. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and express our appreciation to, to the voters for that. Also, congratulations to Vice Mayor Duff for her election and council members elect Alicia Goforth and Scott Summers. So that was a significant thing that was on our consent agenda that I neglected to, to highlight. Similarly, on the consent agenda was item six. We put in, we, we made some changes to our, our city ordinances having to do with outdoor dining. These were lessons learned during COVID. And we were, we've kind of gone back and institutionalized them now in, in response to, I think, some, making life a little bit more easy for some of our business owners. So before we move on, I just wanted to, to make note that we had made those changes and that those were voted on, on the consent agenda. All right, having said that, the next item off of our consent agenda is item 8C. This was taken off because a gentleman indicated that he wanted to appear over the telephone. Do we have Mr. King on the line?
We do, Mayor.
Mr. King, welcome to the meeting. You have three minutes to share with us any thoughts you have on this item.
Unmuted. Yeah, Mr. King, you have to unmute yourself on your end.
Hello, council members, mayors, can you hear me?
We can now, please go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you very much for listening to me today. Our company owns the, or is the deck rent for the Mesa Bridge Business Center, which is directly to the east of the proposed development. And I originally, on the, the document that I had sent over, I had expressed that I was not in favor of this. However, after speaking with the transportation department with the City of Mesa and Council Member Freeman, it sounds like this will not impact our business parks. So I would respectfully like to remove my comments that I had made.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. We're glad you got your, got answers to your questions.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Counsel, is there a motion to proceed with agenda item 8C? Motion made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Ms. Spillsbury. Please vote. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is agenda items nine A through nine G. These involve the terms, rates, fees and charges for the electric, gas, the, the electric, natural gas, water, wastewater and solid waste utility services. I'll first call a public hearing on all of these items and then we can vote on the items. So I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mosley, do you have any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No requests, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to address these items? All right, thank you. I, I declare the public. Nine F will be voted on separately.
Right.
All right. So I'm sorry, let me repeat, any council discussion on these items? All right. I then declare the public hearing closed. We can vote on all of these items excluding wastewater first, and then we can vote on the wastewater items separately. So is there a motion to approve items nine B, nine C, nine D, nine E and nine G relating to the electric, natural gas, water and solid waste utility items? I see that Mr. Thompson's made a motion, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please vote. Thank you, those passed unanimously. Counsel will now address agenda item nine F. Is there any comment related to that item? Mr. Thompson, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've, I've, when we were in the Audit and Finance Committee meeting, I made the recommendation that we could lower our wastewater by 1% to a proposed 3.25%. And I base that on some of the information that we have. Over the last five years, we've made some pretty major adjustments in 17, 18, a 4% adjustment. And then moving forward to 2021, we had a 0% interest rate or adjustment for our wastewater. And so with the economy the way it is, recently in the 21, 22 was a 3% adjustment. And now we're at 4.25. And I think it just behooves, I've had a lot of constituents reach out to me asking that their wastewater be considered a little bit less than what it is. And I know it's not a whole lot of money out of somebody's monthly bill, but I think the principle is, is if we can offer a lower percentage of 3.25, that's what I would like to support.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ms. Spillsbury.
Is this the conversation we previously had at study session, the same one, right? This isn't, I wasn't at the meeting before this, so I just wanted to make sure that I was on the same page.
Right.
So, because I, I still, I'm going to stick to what I think is that it's better to not have a bigger increase next time. So I think we should keep it more consistent.
Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. Mr. Luna and then Mr. Thompson.
I, I've been here nine years, 10 years, and I would rather keep it consistent than get a bigger hit next year. So I'm going to be, I agree with Councilmember Spillsbury.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, did I see your finger up?
Yes, sir. I actually agree with Councilmember Freeman. I think with inflation the way it is, and I brought this up when we had the conversation about our rates, that with, with the inflation that the way it is, I would really like to see a reduction across the board. But I didn't win that vote, but I would certainly like to see a reduction in our wastewater and, and give the, give our residents a breath to be able to put some money back.
All right. I know this was discussed in, in our study session. Mr. Brady, can you remind me that the proposal from staff is what? And as, Mr. Freeman was?
I'm going to need some help, but it's a 1% increase. And I would, I think council members said it, when we did the 0% at council's request, that's why the next year was 4% because we had to make up for it. So I think the difference in the percentage on a monthly basis is how much? Ryan?
So the difference from the proposed 4.25% to the 3.25% is 24 cents a month is the difference.
And if we don't do, if we do the lower amount, what is it going to have to be the following year?
So if we do the lower amount, we are looking at an estimated 5% for the next two years adjustment to wastewater.
That's what we're, that goes to council member's point. Okay, thank you.
But again, in all fairness, Mr. Brady and Ryan, we evaluate this every year. So we, we determine our increases based on, you know, the, the utilities that we have. So you may say five today, it may be less. And one year, based on council suggestion, we had 0%. And there've been small increases of no higher than 4%, 3.5 and 3. So I'm, I'm still going to stick to my guns and, you know, I'm probably know I'm outvoted, but that's okay too.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'll repeat my comments from, from the previous meeting as well. I think we have, over the last couple of years, been very sensitive to our rate payers and so much so that we've subsidized our electric utility to the, to the tune of 20 million plus dollars. We've, we've frozen rates, as has been indicated. The rate adjustments that we're proposing now are significantly less than the rate of inflation. So I think we have gone, made extraordinary efforts to, to be mindful of, of the fact that we are in the middle of, of a lot of inflation and it is difficult for, for families right now. But I, I think the proposal at 24 cents a month obviously is not significant, but I think the more, it's not significant either way, frankly, you know, whether we do it or we don't. But I think that the broader point is that if we can, if, the more that we freeze our rates, the more it increases the chance that we're going to have a spike in, in rates to compensate for that. Now, I, I do agree, and my wife who pays the bills in our house, you know, constantly is, is chiding me for how expensive utilities are and how the, the water and wastewater are expensive. So I, I'm very mindful of that, but I, and I think we as a community need to really get a lot better and, and we need to change our behavior with regard to the efficient use of water outside. Our, our wastewater rates are based on our water usage, particularly exact during the winter months. So for example, if you succumb to the social pressure to do a, to, to put down rye grass and do a winter lawn, that's going to spike your water usage during exactly the two or three months that we're measuring your water usage and setting your wastewater rates. So I think we all need to just, we're going to have to, as a community, get more aggressive in helping each other get over the idea that, that grass is to be used as, as a decorative part of our community. There's a time, there's a place for grass. I want my grandkids playing on grass when they go to their soccer games. But I think we have to get over putting, you know, watering, excessive use of outdoor water outside. So having said that, I, we do need to work on changing our behavior. We do need to work on being more efficient with our water. But for the reasons I said previously, I will support this motion. Counsel, any, any other comments on this item?
I'd like to make just a quick comment that one of the reasons I wanted to keep it as the recommendation is of all the utilities we have, when you look at the bottom line on our operationals of our, our revenues and expenses, wastewater is the most upside down by far of any other utility. And our projected operational costs are expected to increase 5.7 million over the next year. So of any utility, especially when it comes to water, I don't think we can afford to not take some kind of increase. We're not even began to cover our operational costs and capital costs where we are. So I think it's important, even at 24 cents, but with all our users and such, over time it will make a difference. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, we're on, considering item nine F. Any additional discussion, counsel? All right, if there's a motion made by Councilmember Spillsbury, seconded by Councilmember Luna for approval, please vote. Motion passes five yes and two no with Mr. Freeman and Mr. Thompson voting no. Next item on our agenda is item 10A. This is to conduct a public hearing and take action on the minor general plan amendment and amending the existing Chapter 7 community character of this, of the This Is My Mesa 2040 general plan. I'm sorry, let me say that again. The 2040 Mesa General Plan, This Is My Mesa, this is to amend Chapter 7 of that document pertaining to the educational campus subtype and the medical campus subtype of specialty districts. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No requests, Mayor.
Joel, you've requested to speak on agenda items 11A and 11B. It's essentially the same thing. Would you like to be heard during the public hearing? Thank you. Please come forward. Thank you, you have three minutes.
Mayor Giles, council members, Joel Sanus from Udall Shumway, 1138 North Office School Road, Suite 101. I'm here representing AT Steel University again. The, the, the resolution of the city council is a resolution to amend the general plan specifically in regard to the educational and medical campus subtype. That means the specialty district that we discussed previously, that includes the area where AT Steel University is located. AT Steel University is in the educational campus subtype that includes the broader subtype of an educational campus and a medical campus subtype. As the council knows, it's Section 11-75-1 of the code establishes the procedures for making changes to the general plan. Section 70, 11-75-2 provides that application for amendment of the Mesa general plan designation applicable to a piece of property shall made, be made in the office of the planning division on an application form provided by the city. We do not believe there's been any application to amend the general plan. This is a resolution, I believe, that has been supported by staff. That is a, a matter that should be more properly handled through an annual review of the general plan instead of having staff making resolutions to amend the general plan. In addition, under Section 11-75-3 B1, all general plan amendments shall be, shall be subject to two public hearings by the Planning and Zoning Board. If council is likely aware of the procedures for the, this proposed amendment to the general plan. plan. It was initially noticed for a hearing on Wednesday, November 16, 2022. That was the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board. The minutes, or the agenda, excuse me, of that Planning and Zoning Board, the minutes say that it was continued to the November 22, 2022 Planning and Zoning Board special meeting. And then the special meeting was held on November 22, 2022. On behalf of AT Steel University, we do not think that a public hearing that was continued to another hearing constitutes an initial public hearing. So we don't think planning and zoning has conducted two public hearings on this amendment in addition to the procedural argument that this is not an application made to planning and zoning, but is the staff's own resolution. Substantively, the language of the amendment is very difficult for AT Steel University to accept. The general idea that the secondary uses can include housing isn't necessarily objectionable. What is objectionable is this language with regard to the general plan amendment says when an anchor educational establishment is already built and operating in a character area, that time in a development proposal, meaning AT Steel University, then they can, then an applicant can default to the secondary uses under the general plan. So as we discussed before, this opens the possibility that AT Steel University, which is supposed to be in a campus setting that has a single use, can now be surrounded by uses that are not educational or medical. And for that substantive reason, AT Steel University opposes this amendment to the general plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sands. That concludes the, any other, any other public comment before we move on? Do any council members wish to address this item? Hearing done, I declare the public hearing closed. We now will move on to agenda item 11, which is to take action on a resolution relating to a minor general plan amendment, amending the existing Chapter 7 of the general plan pertaining to the educational campus subtype and the medical campus subtype of specialty districts. So council, we're to the point where we discussed downstairs that we have two options before us, one that's a recommendation from staff, the other, that recommendation plus an additional recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board. So we need to decide if we're going to, if we like either of those options. Ms. Spillsbury.
So I would like to make a motion to approve 11B, which is the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation. And as I said downstairs, I think the argument of why RM5 is okay in the educational subtype is also why I feel like it would be perfectly fine and reasonable to have it in the medical subtype as well. So I think it makes more sense to do the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, 11B.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Thompson has seconded that motion. Before we vote, I would like to hear any discussion. As I indicated, I will support that motion if the consensus of council is B over A, although my personal preference would be A. So is there any council, any preference on council to move forward with A rather than B before we vote on the motion? All right. Mr. Freeman.
You know, Mayor, I support A because it allows staff to look at the applicant's application and determine if four or five RM zoning is appropriate for the, for that special, whether it's medical or educational campus. But it then allows them to obviously have a five zoning if they get approved from staff. So that's where I'm leaning. I understand what Ms. Spillsbury and Mr. Thompson have asked for. So that's where I'm at.
Great. I think we might be in the minority, Mr. Freeman.
Yeah.
Unless I hear anything, any other, anybody else speak up? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve this item, and it's to follow the, rather than 11A, it's 11B. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Thank you. That passes six votes yes and one no, with Mr. Freeman voting no. All right. Thank you. I think that concludes all of the items on our agenda, with the exception of agenda item 12, which is items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak under this item?
We do not have any requests, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.
Right.